We've got, I don't know if we have a quorum yet.
I see four.
Three. I see three. I see, I see two of us in one. And we got. Okay, we got, we got a quorum. All right. Well, let's bring us into, bring us into meeting here. I'll read the, for the last time, I'm going to read the words on the virtual meetings. For the record, I'd like to announce Governor Northam's Amendment 28 to House Bill 29 adopted at the Virginia General Assembly. 2020 reconvene veto session allowing boards to meet virtually during emergency declarations. The amendment provides that a body may meet by electronic communication without a quorum of the public body or any member of the governing board physically, being physically assembled at one location when the governor has declared a state of emergency. And the declared state of emergency makes it impractical or unsafe for the public body to assemble in a single location. And, and the purpose of the meeting is to discuss or transact business statutorily required or necessary to continue the operations of the public body. An emergency declaration was issued on March 17, 2020, under Governor Northam's Executive Order 53. Due to coronavirus, coronavirus, as part of the order, temporary restrictions were, were put on place in restaurants, nonessential businesses, and all public and private in-person gatherings of 10 or more individuals were prohibited. The Reports of Redevelopment and Housing Authority of Commissioners' June 17, 2021 meeting will be virtual using Microsoft Teams to facilitate the meeting. So again, this will be our last virtual meeting. It has been a challenge. I appreciate the staff. Warren, you and your getting us all together through regular sessions and emergency sessions. Thank you very much. And lastly, and we'll, this will be the one we'll read consistently next, next time. The Reports of Redevelopment and Housing Authority PRHA Board of Commissioners are held normally third Thursday of each month at 5:00 PM. All meetings are conducted at PRHA's main office here at 3116 South Street unless otherwise noted. All members of the public are welcome to attend, and of course, we'll ask them for comments later on. All right. So calling us to order, and Ms. Marshall, if you could take the roll call, please. I'd appreciate it.
Yes. Commissioner Barham. Commissioner Cost.
Here.
Commissioner Jiggetts.
Present.
Commissioner Prince. Commissioner Wicks.
Here.
Vice Chair Roberts.
Here.
Chair Lalonde.
Here. Thank you very much.
As Secretary of Technology, I'd like to, for the record, put that Commissioner Barham is traveling, and so he had an excuse, absent for the job, because he was traveling for his job.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. You should, you should have before you the minutes of our last meeting, May 20, 2021. I'll ask for a motion about the minutes, or if there's any discussion about the minutes. Good. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roberts. All right. Ms. Marshall?
Commissioner Cost.
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggetts.
Yes.
Commissioner Wicks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Roberts.
Yes.
Chair Lalonde.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you. I'll move right into my, my comments, and I appreciate the, the opportunity to speak. It's been, again, another, another busy month. I want to start off by just saying we lost, we lost two former employees here at PRHA. Sandy Harris, who was working with, with the team on the Housing Choice voucher program, passed away. And Don Taylor, who had worked for the agency for decades, is the, in the locksmith side. Dana Barnes, that's right. I'm sorry, Dana Barnes. So I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Bland just added the third one. But was able to attend the funeral of the two. Again, great people, great history, Mr. Taylor, great history here, Mr. Barnes, great history here at PRHA. If anyone didn't get a chance to know any of these three, they were all three solid PRHA employees. So their loss is felt, and our prayers are with them and their families. Secondly. Secondly, the staff led by Mr. Bland and Ms. Winston and myself, we met about two weeks ago with the city manager, with members from the Economic Development Authority. Councilman Battle was one of the leading, leading proponent. He was the one who put the meeting together for us. So we could, again, push our agenda, and I'll talk about, I feel, what our agenda as we go forward. But the first one was about Dale Holmes, and the concern that we have for Dale Holmes, the security of Dale Holmes. She has promised that, or at least promised, at least that's what I heard, that they would help, help us procure cameras for, for Dale Holmes. So we've got some onsite, online visibility of Dale Holmes, at least we can have some stuff recorded. I've been trying to go out there about twice a week at night. Though both times I was there, there was extra, extra police officers there. In fact, they had one of the, one of the areas barricaded so they could look at who was coming in and out of the facility. Our security officer was there on the premises. We are nowhere near Saul out there. I am not going to imply that we're nowhere near Saul. But it, it appears that at least we're getting some traction. We've got a long way to go out there. Dale Holmes, a long way to go. Secondly, we talked to the, the group that we had, that we met with. We talked about a couple of the development issues we had. We had the school, school superintendent there because we've got some work possibly we want to be doing with the schools. And then lastly, Mr. Mr. Bland brought up the agreement, the, the operating agreement that we have with the city is decades old, and it needs to be seriously updated. So there's, there's some conversations going on between the staff and, and the city on what services could be available to us and what updates we need to do with services. Mr. Bland and I attended a meeting with the Ports of Partnership. Again, a good meeting, a very educational meeting, a lot of discussion about the casino and what the casino is bringing to the city. The portion, Mr. Bland allowed me to speak on behalf of PRHA. The one I brought up was about 340 High Street and appealing to that group with the Port of Partnership that we needed their support and making sure that we could get the best value for the dollar here in the city of Portsmouth and get the best tenant that we could have at 340 High Street. And I asked for their, their attention, support, and any, any help that they could give us for 340 High Street. The, the audit, I wanted to take a step back. And the audit that Shannon brought the auditor in to talk to us about last month. Again, I just want to say, great job to the staff, Shannon, and you, and the work that y'all done with the financials to bring, bring what, some, some, not errors, but just make sure we got good information that could be gleaned by the staff and also by the commissioners. I want to make sure that the commissioners are aware of what level you're looking at. When, when we're discussing matters with the staff, that, that we, we realize this is a $200 million organization that this staff is, is trying to help, is trying to manage. That's a tremendous, tremendous amount of money, tremendous amount of responsibilities, tremendous amount of detail that they have to get into to help manage the, actually, $203 million organization. With that comes $28 million in revenue, which is what they're, again, what we need to keep our, keep our head afloat, to keep our operations going, to keep our maintenance going, to keep our security going. So if you have the discussions with the staff, let's make sure that we're trying to support them as much as we can to add value to this $203 million organization. That's a tremendous amount of money. So with that in mind, I was just trying to go over, as we, as we hit the streets and as we, as commissioners, are out there talking to folks and what, what I've been able to glean from the staff. As far as priorities that, that I have right now, is anything involving safe environment for our tenants, with the particular emphasis on Dale Homes and Swanson Homes. So safe environment, whether that's if you talk to anybody that you know, or counsel anybody that you have with the police force or public safety, let's make sure they know, hey, this is the number one issue we have is keeping our tenants safe. The second one is those areas you talk about, and people develop for senior housing or workforce housing that, that could be had, any monies that could be had, whether it be HUD or from the city, CDVG or HEAL money, or any collaboration with any other entities here in the Portsmouth or the Hampton Roads region. That's what we're looking to do, is try and expand the base of senior housing and workforce housing. And the last one is any collaboration that you have with city leadership, just to let them know that we're here. We are definitely open for business, and this $203 million organization, we intend to even take this, take it even higher. It was great that we got the Move to Work project, and, and we've gotten good press with that. So we want to keep that, that ball rolling. Okay? So with that, we'll go to, I don't, or either one of the council liaisons there, Councilman Battle or Vice Mayor Barnes, are you on? Okay, I'll move on to committee remarks. Rita, did you want me to take finance, or did you want to take any comments?
Yes, please. You do.
Okay. As we know, we got the briefing last, last month from Shannon. I talked with Shannon, not that it's business as usual, because you don't run a $203 million business with business as usual. But there has been no hiccups, no throwbacks from the last meeting we had. She's looking to provide the second quarter financials to us in August. And Shannon, was there anything that, any, oh, by the way, that you might have had since we, since we've talked?
Nope. We've just been attending the Move to Work webinars. The last three weeks, I believe, have been the finance webinars, so very informative. Just trying to keep up with that, and then the oncoming new, like, SREP and just some other things. But finance has been on par, looking for the auditors to possibly hit with us in July. The audited is supposed to be submitted by 9:30, but HUD has been gracious and extended us until March of 30, March of, March 31 of 2022. But I've informed the auditors, I cannot go that far because January through Mar, you know, starts the new partnership audits and the unaudited. So we're going to try to have it wrapped up before the end of December.
Excellent. Thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome.
Development Committee, I don't, I know Mr. Barham's not here. Ms. Cost, are you on that with her? With him?
Yes.
Yes. Did you have any comments?
I think Phillip, do you want to go over? I know we didn't really get a chance to meet much, which kind of just been sending emails back and forth. So do you want to discuss it?
Sure, if you'd like. There were really no big changes from what happened. I guess over the, the last month, there were four items that I updated the Development Committee on. One was the victory policy, 4054 victory for the bar. There were offers that were received in the past, but we had rejected both of those offers. They were much lower than the value of the property. The second item was on 340 High Street, the TCC Visual Studio. TCC is moving out in mid-July, and so we're working with them to move out and receiving offers, and actually receiving offers from a couple developers on kind of highest best use options for that property. So that's moving along. Swanson Homes, at the end of last year, we submitted an application for demolition. That was successful. We received, just a couple weeks ago, the approval from HUD to demolish that. And so our housing folks have started immediately coordinating and planning relocation of those families. But that process is underway. And lastly, there's a property at 5315 High Street West, which is a single-family home surrounded by some developable area that we are in negotiations with, just to see what, you know, opportunities lie there. We had moving offers. So there'll be more to come on that property. That's the four items that I discussed with the Development Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could add one additional item. The city of Portsmouth provided us $150,000 of CDVG funds to re-implement our elderly home care program.
Excellent.
To us on July 1st. So we're excited about that opportunity. It's a need in the community for it. So we'll be working on that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Winston. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cost. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Jiggetts?
And Sandy, the Director Winston, did they share how they came up with the amount of 150,000? I would have expected it to be like 250,000. I'm just curious.
They did not share the amount or how they derived the amount. They did explain that it may be opportunity, once we utilize that 150,000 to obtain more money. So it may be an additional.
Good.
Thanks, Graham.
Good. Thank you. Human Resources Committee, I don't see Sean here. Ms. Wicks, are you on that committee with Sean?
Yes.
I am.
Yes, ma'am. Did you have any, any report?
Well, we haven't been able to collectively meet at this point. Mr. Bland and Sean did meet one day and took a ride around and looked at some properties on that. But that has nothing to do with human resources. We were given a booklet, and it's so thick in human resources that that committee is pretty broad. So, Mr. Bland, you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, what we're going to do is, what we're going to do is, in July and August, it probably will be, I would say probably by January of 2022, we should be able to submit recommendation to the full board, and hopefully the board will approve it, I was assumed by the spring of 2022, the draft of personnel policy that we have professionally written. But as Renee's saying, it's very thick, so it's just going to take some time to get through it, to make sure that the, the Human Resource Committee is comfortable with it before we reach out to the full board for them to go ahead to file.
I'd appreciate that, Ms. Wicks. That's been sitting out there a while. There's some specific elements in there, and I'll, I'll talk to you and Sean offline, that has me concerned, particularly in how grievances are to be handled here at the, the agency. I don't know where, I don't know if it's within human resources or, or legal. The, the healthcare, healthcare policy, if you could just ask the questions about the healthcare policy, healthcare insurance policy here at PRHA, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else in particular, Mr. Chair?
No, ma'am. Just, no, just, I know that it's been recently renewed. I just want to make sure that you kind of give it a 30,000, you know, 30,000-foot look at it and see, see, I just, you know, it's, I don't have any specific, I don't have a specific items. I guess I'm just one of those, whenever you have a major change like that, and healthcare is probably the biggest one that people will be concerned about. It's not for us to make, I'm not looking for us to make decisions. Just make sure you're aware of what, what the staff is, is, what management here has, at PRHA has, is given to the employees here at the, at the facility, all right?
Sure.
Right. Housing, Commissioner Jiggetts, Commissioner Cost? I don't know who wanted to take the charge on this one.
Director Jenkins and Director Thomas have kept us abreast, and even an email. We sort of established the standard of, of email concerning the Housing Choice voucher.
Yeah, or anything, anything.
As well as the rental payments and everything. I really don't have anything
Okay.
unless Director Thomas or Director Jenkins or Commissioner Cost wants to add to it.
Commissioner Cost, do you have anything in particular you wanted to add?
Um, I don't. Wasn't many much changes from last month.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Thomas, anything, anything, any, oh, by the way, since the last time y'all had talked?
No, we're, we're just attending a lot of webinars, learning about some new programs and so forth, and getting vouchers issued and trying to get families leased up.
Yes, ma'am. Val, did you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I, I really appreciate both y'all. I mean, y'all, while Shannon's doing the scorekeeping and Phillip is trying to keep money coming in the front door, you know, y'all two are the foundation and the reason why we're here. So I really appreciate the service that y'all, y'all provide to us. So thank you very much. Dolores, so while we're in housing, was there anything you needed to talk about or wanted to bring up?
The only thing I'd like to say is that the Resident Services Department is going to participate in the HUD's Healthy Families Program this year. We've done it for several years. Of course, last year we didn't do it. But they've implemented it again this year and asked housing authorities to do some type of activity during the month of June, so that we could, and the focus this year is on, of course, vaccinations. So we are holding an event on June 30th, and you'll be receiving more information on it. We have community partners that are going to come out, including the Health Department, that will be doing vaccinations on the spot. Because I'm sure you all are aware of the article recently this week that showed how Portsmouth vaccination rate was one of the lowest in the area at 29%. So we're, we are really trying to push that. We are working with EVMS, and they're trying to get the residents involved in their COVID. They have a COVID group where they're working with housing authority residents from all over the Hampton Roads area. And so they're trying to do some educations to try to figure out some means that they can do more outreach and marketing to find out just what exactly is preventing people from getting vaccinated. So hopefully, we will have some residents come out and get vaccinated during that time.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Adams. And again, my hat's off to you and your team. Y'all really have great relationships. When we talk about collaboration, your organization, obviously, if, if the commissioners don't know it, is probably the most in partnership with other organizations here in the city of Portsmouth, so I appreciate that. I'm looking forward as, as COVID now is, I'm not saying it's, it's over. It's not, not that it's all. But I'm anxious for, for y'all to start rolling out those programs where we can see folks coming out and enjoying them. And I'm hoping that you'll be able to do that senior Christmas party with Parks and Rec, because I'm anxious to try out those dance steps that I've been working on since COVID. All right? Thank you. And as far as governance, we've got nothing to report in governance. Just a reminder, I guess, at our annual meeting in August, September? September, we'll be, we'll be voting again for officers. So thank you very much. But Renee, let me just go back again. That personnel policy, yeah, it, it, it took me probably a month and a half to go over it. But it, I think, I think 95% of it is great, but there's just a couple things, and I'll, I'll talk to you about those couple things that I saw. And if you want to bring it forward, that'd be great. Okay? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. I, I had a question about the vaccinations. With trying to find out, you know, the reason why our numbers are so low in the city with being vaccinated, and especially with the children, too. I know in a lot of states or cities, they're offering incentives, you know, to, for those who have been wary of getting vaccinated. Are there any incentives that you guys are throwing out there? Or what are we doing to assure that our citizens are getting vaccinated?
Well, the Housing Authority is not providing any incentives. I do know that there has been some discussion at the, the state level about whether or not Virginia is going to offer any incentives. And EVMS, who will also be out there on the 30th, they have some incentives that they're trying to, one, get, get people more educated and interested in learning more about the vaccine. So hopefully, they will choose to become vaccinated. And they indicated to us that they have some things that they're going to bring out on the 30th to try to get people at least to come to their table to talk with them about it. And the Health Department did not tell us if they were bringing anything, any type of incentives. I haven't heard about anything that the Portsmouth Health Department is doing. But I know they've been doing a lot of.
That's a no, Ms. Wicks. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's good to add, well, at least ask, at least run it up. Ed, if you could run up the flagpole on, on the state side and see what, see, one, it's always, can we use the money for incentives, I guess? All right? And what money can we use? But, you know, that's, that's been one of those personal decision type of things, and I don't know how much we want to get. I'll, I'll see what you want to do.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Right? I'm going to pass the time to you, Mr. Bland.
Well, I was going to talk about the demolition of Swanson, but you already, we sent you the letter. All, all the commission, you got to copy that letter. So I guess by this time next year, we will be in full swing relocating the families out so that we can look at probably, I would say probably the spring of 2023, doing the demo of Swanson and doing something different there. And the other one was, you got the letter referencing the Move to Work, and those are the only two items that, that I have. Now, the other thing, we are closed tomorrow, for Juneteenth. So we will be closed tomorrow, and, and that's baseball, bow-dette. Everything else you've kind of discussed.
How about Port of July? Are you closing those days?
Fourth of July, we will be off that Monday, because the fourth falls on a Sunday, I believe, if I remember. So we'll be off, on, on that Monday for the Fourth of July.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Jiggetts?
Mrs. Lynn, were you able to find out how the breakdown of the appropriation that the city received the 250,000, I think, Portsmouth, who the HUD, what was it, the HUD? I asked you to check on. It's coming down from HUD to the state, and Virginia Beach got like, what, 400,000, 300 and some thousand? We only got two something, and I think Norfolk got the large amount, and then Hampton, and I couldn't understand.
Get back with, get back with the Jiggetts personally there and see if you could figure out the formula.
Yeah, I sent you the email, because I was trying to make sense of it, because our poverty rate is 18%. Zoom Beach is only 8%, Norfolk is 22%. So I was really interested in how they came up with that formula.
Okay, I'll, I'll check into it.
Okay. And the only other question.
This was, this was the article that hit the paper, hit the paper about a week ago.
And the only question I had was, for our resident properties, are they nonsmoking?
All of our property are nonsmoking.
Okay, because I've observed residents smoking on the porch. At the newest property.
All HUD property on the national level, nonsmoking.
Yeah, I thought, I thought they were, but if we can send out some type of directive to the residents reminding them that these are nonsmoking properties from the front porch to the back porch and
Thank you.
on the lawn.
Okay. Thank you. We're at the point now for, is there any other comments that any other commissioners had for, directly for, for Mr. Bland? All right. We're at the portion of our meeting where, where public speakers are allowed. We are a public body, and we do, we are responsible to the citizens of Portsmouth. There's any public speakers that would like to speak? All right, hearing none. We have no items for the close agenda. Thank you very much for keeping us tight there, Ms. Bland. And at this point, I'll just, I'll just go around, I'll just go around and see if any, any commissioners have any, anything that they would like to bring up. And Ms. Cost, I'm going to go to you first.
Hi. No, I don't have much. I appreciate the meeting I had for the Dale's Home residents last month. Very informational. I think for Alisa, I forgot to ask you earlier about the, the scheduling. Was that a little better since the meeting?
Yes, yes. The scheduling has gotten better. You'll see more of a presence out there now with our security officers. And they're actually on foot walking around. So the residents appreciate seeing them.
That's good. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Jiggetts, do you have anything?
No, I'm going to answer my question.
Good. Thank you very much. Commissioner Wicks? I think you might be on mute, Renee.
I'm sorry. I don't have anything. And, and I'm so sorry. What was the question? I was trying to get this computer straight with Warren, but what, what was the question?
There was no question, Ms. Wicks. I was just giving you an opportunity. Was there any? Was there anything you wanted to bring up at all for the benefit of the commission?
Oh. I guess not at this time. My only concern is what you discussed earlier, or my main concern is just the safety of the residents in Swanson Homes and Dale's Homes.
Absolutely.
Just continue to try to work on whatever we can to assure that. So other than that, I want to do whatever I can. I'm going to start making rounds out there as well and, you know, just to see how, what's going on or, you know.
Ms. Wicks, be very careful when you do that. I went out there once.
Well, I just moved from out there, so I know some, a lot of people out there. Well, at least in my court, I'm familiar with some people. And I know it's scary, but I will.
I got to tell you, you know, after, after the discussion that we had last month, as I said, I've started going out there on a regular basis. And I got to tell you, I am, I am not comfortable out there. I've been, I've been verbally attacked out there, all right? There's, and I, you know, it is, we have, we have got to, you know, we're not in the security business and I don't want us to get into the security business. But we have got to keep the pressure on the city. And I'm just, for the record, it is difficult to work with the city right now when we don't have a permanent police chief and we don't have permanent people that are in the, in the security side house. You know, I'm hearing about being short police officers till the cows come home, okay? But we, we deserve what we need to have and that's the responsibility of the city to make sure that they're helping us out. Money, this is not a money problem. This is a, this is a leadership, this is a leadership problem, right? Right?
Is it possible that maybe for one of our meetings, we could have an onsite meeting?
Absolutely, absolutely, that's a great idea, that's a great idea. All right, Vice Chair Roberts?
Well, all of the things you've said concern me. You know, it's, it's just having people feel not safe is, is, is just awful. And we're going into a very hot summer. This is like the worst part of the year for us to be in this situation where people are just getting out and, you know, trying to, you know, begin to enjoy their lives again, but they can't even get out of their apartments maybe because it's uncomfortable. So I'm, you know, I agree, we need to do more and get the city to help us do more because we can't do it on our own, we really can't. So other than that, I'm, you know, I think the agency does a great job of doing what you do and thank you for all of that.
So with that, I'm just going to close it down and just say again, thank you very much for everyone's support, the staff. Thank you very much. I know Ms. Roberts and I, before the last meeting, we took the accounting staff out to lunch. I really enjoyed that. I had, I don't know if it was pleasure or surprise, there was a bunch of them at a private restaurant a couple weeks ago. And I got to tell you, they were having fun. And I like having fun with people. There wasn't one of them that did not really, did not say that they had, that they were having a great time working for the organization, that's good. We're, we're in a good, we're in a good place right now financially. We're in a good place right now as far as being able to have, I think, two great liaisons for us. We're in a good place with the new city manager. It's a new slate we have, so let's just keep the pressure to bear. But I want to leave with that number one thing. Safe environment for our, for our tenants is the number one thing we need to deal with. All right, all right, I'll take a motion. The next scheduled meeting is in place here on July 15th. Mr. Bland, when you get a chance, if you could send all the commissioners any upcoming conferences that are coming up, so just to remind them if they have a chance to attend them. Everyone does have a stipend that they have available to them to travel for these conferences and seminars. And I want to make sure that we're getting as much opportunity to meet with the other, other housing authorities. All right, I take a motion for adjournment?
I can make a motion for adjournment. I just want to make sure, Ms. Marshall, did you hear my comment that I said to Mr. Chairman Lalande about, I would like to see one of our board meetings.
Listen, 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 yeah, yeah.
Near Dale Homes, maybe in Lexington. I don't know if you heard that comment because I had my face turned away from you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
You did hear.
I've got a motion, I've got a motion for adjournment. Do I have a second?
A second.
We're adjourned, thank you very much.
Is this the last virtual meeting?